I hereby call to order this meeting of the planning board on March 21st, 2017. Is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on our agenda today? No one? Okay. The next issue we have is our minutes from March 7th. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any requested modifications or alterations to the minutes? No? How about a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve March 7th minutes.
Paul's talking about it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against or any abstentions?
Stan wasn't at the meeting.
An abstention? Okay. Next on our list, we have A and R from 63 Highland Ave. Kevin and, if I'm pronouncing this right, Jovira Nedo? Did I say that correctly? Do you want to come up and tell us a little bit about what you've got going on?
The plans are right in front of you.
What we have is a single-family house on the-
Let's go right over everything.
Private or personal? It's upside down, yeah. This is the Mylar.
Yeah.
We just upgraded it for two additional frontages for two additional building lots.
Okay, so this one is standing out to me as being on, oh wait, is it this plus this combined?
Yes.
I got it, yeah. So that's 100, yeah.
And is there a structure here now?
Here?
I see a structure right here.
Yes, there is, but it's going to be moved. This is like an existing garage that was built right on grade, kind of like almost ready to go over.
Oh, that's right there. Carport here, garage carport.
Anyone have any questions? Frontage is the big issue in an A and R, and it seems to be there.
Yep. Right on there.
Is there a motion to endorse?
I make a motion, we endorse the A and R as presented on Highland Avenue.
63 Highland Ave. There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any against or any abstentions? Thank you very much. Do I need to sign anything?
For Jessica.
Yeah.
Yes, you have to sign it. You've got to sign it.
Sorry, I'm going to have to kind of come over here.
There's about 20 copies of Mylar, two or three.
Where's the date? Where's the signature? See a space here?
Yeah, you got a space.
I think it's actually underneath.
Just go under the-
It's just underneath the date.
It's a little weird. So I date it and sign it, yeah? There we go.
Right there, you got it, James.
I'm sorry, I'm a lefty, so I've got to get right in.
Good, get it, it's all good.
I have the same problem.
You going to Bergen off my night?
I don't know. No. Well, it depends.
Is another plus two or three copies?
That sounds about right. I like that, thank you. So there's four, and then I'll do the Mylar. The top one is signed. There you go. Now, we need some for the city?
Yeah.
Jess, how many do we need for the city?
Four copies.
Four. Alright, so I'll take two unsigned.
And then I'll take two of the nine. And then I'll take this. You're getting pretty confused.
You want an extra?
You got enough there?
Yeah, I'm good. I need four days, yeah.
We have that sheet of paper back. It's stuck on the back here.
There we go.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Alright. What's next? The proposed zoning amendment. The draft language for the seasonal cottage community. I think we're pretty close to sending that up to the next phase.
Take care.
Have you guys had a chance to review the latest changes to the seasonal amendment?
I can review them if you need me to, but just to refresh, most of the changes had been accepted by the board at this point. The only addition was the language in regards to landscaping, which we pulled from another section of the zoning. It's exactly lifted as the landscaping requirements under Section 6.51.
Okay.
And there was a question remaining regarding the unheated storage space located under the main floor. I think what the board had determined at the last meeting is to, once this gets sent to the city council, process that the board would discuss it with the ordinance subcommittee when that joint public hearing happens.
Other than that, those were the only changes that were made at the last meeting, and at this point, I think it's ready to go, be voted on and sent to council unless there's any other changes that the board might have. Is that the precise language you use, sent to council?
Yes, it goes sent to the full council, and then the full council will send it to the subcommittee, and then the subcommittee, we have the public hearing with them, and then, once you each voted out, then it goes back to the full council for a vote.
Okay, so we need, unless someone has further modifications or requests on this, we would need a proposal to send to full council, the seasonal cottage community proposed zoning amendment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any against or abstentions? Okay.
Okay, I will start the process then.
And we are on the last item tonight, and that's a special permit amendment for 34 Hill Road, 1776 Brewing Company. Eric, do you want to come up and tell us what you're planning?
Sounds good.
Alrighty.
Do you need the easel?
I've got some revised.
You need a board?
It says revised. Well, what we, so I sort of started this process. I've known neighbors several times before. And we understand that this is a continuous discussion. In the one month in which I've submitted, which I think we might have to share.
That's fine. I do need one copy for the file, though. So, that's fine, I'll take this one.
I'll take the B2.
And just for the record, what you're giving us is, so it's interior plans, not exterior site plans. No changes to the exterior site plan, then what's been submitted?
There is a sheet that's showing the relocation of parking and stuff, which is a large sheet here.
Okay, that's fine.
And we can bring it up into discussion.
Okay. And it's for the board. If there's, yeah.
So this is built here. And what is this patio?
They'll state their name.
Are you actually moving the porch or are you creation?
Yeah, we're going to take the porch down. It's a truss metal roof thing.
Can the audience hear? I don't know, it sounds-
We need to formalize this a little bit more.
Yeah, definitely.
Alright, we want to make sure that everyone's able to hear her, so what we're going to do is, we're going to have you guys go to the podium and give us a presentation.
Yep, go ahead. My name is Dave Lapine. I'm the contractor for proposed addition at Fort Hill Brewery. Was the initial contractor in the project back when it was built. We're here tonight to propose a addition to the front of the building, which would be an enclosed structure, basically 22, I'm sorry, it's going to get enlarged, 24 by 74, and reattaching the existing front porch to the building to create a very much similar look as what the existing building has now, but a lower-down structure that is only a one-story structure with a cathedral ceiling inside the enclosed area. There's also a proposed landscape plan for an exterior patio area, which would be constructed on the silo side of the building to keep away any outdoor noise from the neighbors. We're trying to, you know, keep the noises down over there. We had a meeting with the neighbors about a month or so ago. Most of them are in attendance here tonight. Thought it was pretty good. We took some input from them, and they're trying to address their concerns. I think we've done a pretty good job in the plan. The landscape plan right now shows, you know, some buffering vegetation that's going to be over on the side, parking lot front side, which should minimize sight and sound of the outdoor area. We're still working kind of on a theme of the outdoor patio, so some of the plantings haven't really been defined, but there definitely will be some evergreens that'll be year-round blockage for noise and stuff, although we don't anticipate a whole lot of activity out on the patio area in the middle of winter.
Dave, you said you have a landscape plan?
Yeah, I'm looking for that here.
Can you give it to the board so they can at least start to look at where the placement of the evergreens and other items might be? Thank you.
Thank you.
Realized we're a little bit not quite 100% with everything we're doing. We spent this morning meeting with the building inspector and the fire department, going over some of their, we wanted them to get a good review of the plan, as well as the building site, to go over some things. Took some input from them, is what they were looking for, a few items, which I think will discuss a lot of the, some of the concerns that were brought for us as far as occupancy and things like that. Seemed to be working out fine. Met with the DPW engineer today to discuss the onsite as far as paving and things, as far as what we're going to need to do there, and coming, and right now, that's based on, I think, the increased pop occupancy of the building. Originally, there was the 25 paved spaces on the last condition, and some lighting, which we've addressed, and on the recommendation of the building inspector, we are going to go and increase, I believe, to three handicap accessible spots, which would be located in the front of the building, with the main entrance coming directly into the building. I guess at this point, other than some questions that you may have-
If it's okay, I'd like to, you made some statements there, I'd like to just get some questions out on them before the next piece comes up. First off, you said three handicap spots. Can you show us where?
Would be located, right now, we're shown as-
There's two shot.
Yeah, there's one, one right here. This is the, let me grab the bigger one, it might be a little easier for you to see. Right now, the, it's showing an existing handicap spot here, which is right next to the ramp that goes into the front porch area. It's the similar area where it exists now in the building. So the creation of two new handicap areas would be, one on this side of the ramp here, and either one on that side.
Okay.
So they're both, all three will be located right to the main, right to the main entrance.
You also said that you resolved lighting issues.
We have-
We had a condition.
Yes.
That was part of the condition in the last, what were the lights?
So new lighting is going to be placed out here along the parking lot side.
The north side, yeah.
Yep, which would be directed down into the parking lot area, not, you know, typical lighting that is shrouded, so it's not going out across.
So it hasn't been addressed, but it's addressed in the plan?
It is.
Okay, I understand now. I wanted to make sure.
Yep, and there'll be, there also will be some lighting on the, in the landscape, showing these columns out here. So there'll be some lighting that'll be put into the columns and the following-
Can you point them out specifically?
Yeah, these are going to be column areas.
Got it. And what kind of lighting will that be?
Can you get back to the podium to answer this?
That's where it records it, and so for videotaping, we want to make sure that everything gets picked up, that's all.
So the columns that are represented on the landscape plan are, they surround, they're basically 40-inch-high columns. Be some kind of a decorative type of light, potentially to light that area for the outside patio area. Once again, it's, we're still working to kind of on the theme of what that patio is going to be, you know, a Bavarian-style beer garden, or, you know, something like that. So we're still, one of the things we're just trying to work on as far as how that's all going to be taken care of, and that will also determine a lot of the plantings.
Okay. Another question I had is, it originally was going to be 25, you're expanding that, if I'm understanding correctly, and part of it's going to be paved and part of it's not.
Right.
I just want to be absolutely clear that I understand which part is paved. Is it the, I don't longer have the piece here. I think this is the Mylar right here. Thank you. If I'm understanding, and I don't know if you can see what I'm looking at here, but the far side, this section over here, is this a paved and marked piece?
Well, we would be looking at the front, the front entry section where the handicap parking would be. And then, see, we bring it around, basically, to where the patio line would end over in this area. Now, whether we can come up with those numbers to make it all work, we have, we'll have to work around how far we pave.
So it's the front section.
Yeah, the front section-
At a minimum, but until you get 25 paved.
Right, or whatever, whatever the number becomes, because we're increasing the size of the occupancy.
Whatever it be, right.
We do have the ability to recreate parking, because we're going to lose some parking in the front of this part by pushing the building out.
Yes.
So we can recreate some of the existing parking spaces by pushing out all the rest of the rooms do that. So whatever-
In the front of the building, you're saying? In the front?
They'll still be in the front of the building. We're trying to keep the paved area to the front of the building, where general people that are coming into the brewery will be parking on it most of the time, and keeping backside gravel to minimize the sheet flow that's coming off of there and try to keep, you know, we're doing it, we've done a pretty good job of maintaining all our water flow onsite there, through the, through the strip drains that we initially installed from our original permit. And we're trying, you know, just to keep that much on there from, so we're not getting a lot of water flow back down the driveway.
I do have a question about the water flow before I ask that. Since you're paving the front, does that include the drive in?
Yeah.
Straight up matching the pavement that's on the road?
Correct.
Right, all the way?
There is a, there is a listing swale, we have a culvert down at the bottom of the driveway now that crosses under the gravel area, which picks up water flow off of Fort Hill Road all the way up. Once it comes to the, to the hill part, the water comes down, and what doesn't get, flow across the road, comes into that and continues to flow down the drainage line that the town has created and maintained for quite a few years. That's the only source-
Just to clarify that, the drainage swale on Fort Hill Road just takes drainage from the road? It doesn't take drainage from your site?
Correct, correct. All that, all that that does is it crosses underneath the driveway. We put a culvert in there, it continues on all the way down.
And the drainage for your site, is there a stormwater management plan?
There is. And it's been, it was created based on our initial site plan approval, working with DPW, and like I say, it's worked fine. We've had no, no incidents down there, others than a couple of times under construction, we had some, you know, a little bit of washing off of the driveway, but ever since then, it's, it's maintained itself pretty well.
Will it require updating, I wonder, with these changes?
Well, this is what I've been trying, I've opened a conversation with the DPW engineer, and he's going to be kind of working with us to kind of figure out what is going to need to be done there. His initial conversation, which is going to require, we're going to set up a site visit with him, obviously, to see what's out there, and to see what, how it's being handled now, and take the recommendations from him there.
I want to get back to the parking, because initially, we okay, and you had 60 spaces with 25 paved. Now, initially, you were going in with 88.
Yes, 88.
So-
80 or 88? Your plan says 88, and I count, I counted 88?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so now, you have 28 more spaces.
Correct.
Will that increase your paved area?
So that's, that's what we, we need to come up with that calculation, and I brought the discussion up with DPW today, and I think he's, he's kind of just got involved a little bit on this and got the emails, I think.
Did you, you corresponded with him after the email?
I corresponded, this morning, I corresponded.
I know you corresponded with him this morning, but this afternoon, okay. Once he had his comments this afternoon, you have not corresponded. Just to jump in for a second with the board in terms of determining that number, so to recall, in the 2015 permit, the way that that 25 space number was, was come up with, was that was the required number of off-street parking spaces that they needed based on the use. So the manufacturing use calculation, plus the retail use calculation, came up with the 25 spaces. So if there's a change of use in here at all, then that will change the parking number configuration. If this is just simply an expansion of the building with no change in the use, then the parking number will likely stay the same, but that, the board needs to go through that exercise to determine that, based on your conversation here with the applicant.
So it is still the same use, from what I'm reading, it's still just a tasting room, you can buy beer, you can taste beer? There's no food being served at this establishment?
Well, as part of this, this expansion, having the bar area that's down, the new bar that's being created to serve the enlarged area, as well as the outdoor patio, Eric's been in discussion with Jackie Duda about the feasibility of using, having that area where you're serving beer, which is basically a food-related item. And what we're proposing, instead of bringing in kegerators and stuff, we're going to directly feed out of the big cooler with tap lines that are going to come into the new area. So it's been her recommendation that we go forward and recreate that kitchen area into a more commercial sanitary area, with potential of, you know, there's, there's, there's no, there's no plans right now, or that I can even see in the future of ever creating a restaurant scenario in there. There could be an area where there could be some cooking for bar-type foods and things like that, potentially, maybe.
Bar Foods is a restaurant, though.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess it's hard to, how, how you're going to-
You're not planning it right now, you're updating the kitchen for a different use other than restaurant, but by doing that, it's allowing the possibility that at some point in the future.
Correct. And this was pretty much under, under her suggestion. She's been kind of very much, even since we originally built the building, she kind of, I think, was took back that we never put a commercial sites, styles kitchen in there. So this has been kind of a development.
That's something that changes like parking dynamics and traffic dynamics.
Yeah.
So that's a big deal. We need to really iron that out.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
So the park, the, sorry.
Go ahead.
So the parking in the back, that's, that's the, kind of the rows of parking, you have some dividers in here, shown, are those raised curb dividers, or are those just, are those shrubbery, or are those just gravel? What's the intent?
Well, that area right now is, because we really weren't sure how far we were going to have to go with the paving side of it, are just, are identified as parking spots out there. How they become-
Defined.
Defined and stuff would be through, it could be some landscape planting out there around the gravel, so more, it's a more defined area for, as far as parking goes. You know, we all know it's kind of hard to identify individual parking spots on a gravel area. So, you know, thought is, is creating an area that will accommodate all the necessary parking spots that are in it, within a contained area and defined area, and that would be in a gravel situation. I mean, we're trying to keep down the cost of paving, because it's, as we all know, paving is very expensive, and, but we also want to have it so that it's kind of a twofold thing, is try to maintain all that water displacement right on the site.
Right.
It's all sand out there, it drains, the site drains very well, it always has. It's been, you know, it was farm field before that, and it was, it was a very well-drained area, so we're trying to keep that down there. Get the paved areas in there that are necessary, under what we're requesting to be permitted under, and work from there on.
So they're unmarked?
Right, essentially, yeah, they're unmarked, and which, which, you know, is going to just cause a little bit of a challenge for you as an owner to figure out how people are going to park there, or they're going to have to figure out how to park there.
People figure it out pretty well right now. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a really obstructive parking area, so I mean, it's well, once, basically, once the first person parks, the rest of them park right along them, so it's not an area where there's a whole lot of different individual areas where you've got to park and get to.
It's probably for the best not to turn it all into asphalt.
No, I agree, definitely not.
I do want to just note, though, that one of the findings that the board has to find as part of the special permit is that the internal traffic and pedestrian flow is safe. So if it is an unmarked area, even, it's being shown on a plan to sort of delineate how traffic flow may happen. If it's not defined, then the board just needs to talk about that and understand that as part of the findings and the decision, that you feel, or that you're finding, that the internal traffic flow is still safe, even without them being marked. That's got to be one of your findings in the decision.
I personally get the, the no markings and finding the parking space, but I think the point about traffic flow and coming around, you know, to make sure that, because of the size, that someone isn't coming around this way while someone's coming that way, and that, you know, that's a potential for accidents, so I think marking the flow in some way, some signs would be a great, a great idea. I think that that's something you probably would want to-
What's the width of this fire lane on the, on the south, southeastern side of the property?
I believe it's 25 feet from the, from the edge of the current landscape burn over to where the drainage side of property is.
So that's just about two-way traffic. Are you planning on two-way traffic, or one-way around the building?
That, that, that area around there is basically designated for fire protection.
Okay.
Accessing that.
Okay, so people, people will go back and forth around the proposed patio area?
Yes.
And is it currently, I haven't been out in the site, well, for a while, is it currently gravelled all the way, are the extents currently gravelled as they show right now?
Yes, everything is gravelled.
So there's no new gravelled area, or it's just potentially where that break between gravel and-
Correct.
And pavement will be?
And then bringing, just bringing the grades back up to where it matches.
Okay.
If there's no more questions to that, we can continue the presentation?
Oh, sure. I have more questions, I just didn't-
Go for it.
So the existing stormwater collection system is installed as per your previous 2005, 15?
Yeah.
Okay, because there was some concern, 2012, sorry, that the city engineer couldn't find the other one, he thought maybe there was some snow covering the other basin, he could only find one catch basin, so there are two structures out there.
There's one structure, there's one catch basin that's on the front side, which basically handles the sheet flow that comes off the front of the building and goes across into the grass surface and dissipates into that area.
Okay.
Everything else on the fire roadside is a four-foot-deep stone trench with six-inch perforated pipe inside of it, which is allowing everything to leach into the, through the stone, and leach into the sand. The one that's on the other side of the parking lot, the silo side, northwest side, I guess it is, has, has a similar one that starts all the way at the very back of the parking lot, the very rear, for the first parking thing to start, it goes all the way over to the grass surface that's on the other side, and goes into a collection, collecting area that's been enlarged at the end of the pipe. We found that there's, there's never been any water that's ever made it out to the other side and coming out of that surface area.
And how often do you maintain those?
Every, every spring, we go back through and clean them all up after the plowing season is done. And, you know, it's, it's, it's been monitored pretty well as far as how, how active it is. Once we've got the front road area stabilized, and obviously, because there's gravel, every spring, we go back and clean it up again and get some of the grade back. It, it seems to work very well.
Alright. We may come back to these issues as we continue and have discussions involved in the polls, but first, I want to let you guys get through your presentations, so. Next?
I think I've said just about what I want to say right now, as far as the plan and where we're at with continuing on, trying, you know, getting some more stuff together. And obviously, this meeting here tonight was, was another input meeting for us, because we need to get some more things, information from you, is what you're going to see, so we can proceed and get these things done properly. Okay?
Alright. Alright, so now, if anyone wants to talk about any particular point, we can do that, or we could open it up to the public and get their opinion. Got any preferences?
Harry's got something to say, I can tell by his face.
Pen is waving.
Yeah, could you please explain where all your lighting is on this, on this whole project? Where all the light, I want to know where all the lighting is. We know where the lighting is in the parking lot in the back, on the left-hand side, where's the lighting in the front of this place? When you drive in up the, off of Clap Street?
Yeah.
You drive up that little knoll.
Yeah.
What do you plan on doing on lighting on that right-hand side? At the, on the initial parking lot, what do you plan on doing there?
It's right as you come up.
When you come up to the top of the hill.
Right, yeah.
Where the handicap parking is, I think, is that side.
Where's the lighting that's involved with that whole thing?
As of right now, the only lighting that's on there is underneath the porch for exterior lighting, and then we have lighting on the outside of the building, on the-
If I remember correctly, one of the conditions on that, on our previous permit, you're supposed to have lighting, you're supposed to put up a pole or do something on that right-hand side and have that whole thing flooded with light.
That's right, I remember that.
What happened to that?
It's supposed to be wet.
I guess if I can answer that question, the reason we're here doing the application to do all this work is to get all that addition done once and for all. It's, it's kind of hard to go ahead and plan an addition to something and have to tear out a whole bunch of things.
No, I understand all that.
So what we're, one of the reasons we're here tonight is to resolve those, those questions as well. We've shown the lighting out in the, in the large parking lot, we're showing four poles, we directed light in today, it illuminates the entire side. There is lighting on the building on that side already that comes down and shines down. We have lighting proposed in our landscape plan for the illumination of that area out there. And if there's, if there's something that...
This is what he's referring to. It says it's sufficient to illuminate the gravel parking area.
It's actually number five, condition number five from your 2015 permit.
No, the straight marks.
A light will be placed at the top of the driveway sufficient to illuminate that portion of the paved parking lot and driveway? Is that the one you're talking about, Harry?
Yeah.
That, that illuminates the handicap area.
And it is rather dark there.
This is number four, number, oh, probably number four.
Number five on the, I don't know what this...
Probably number four.
Then that's concerning to me that if we, you're looking at two different decisions. All right, this is decision October, or December 8th, 2015?
I'm looking at October 6th. I don't care.
That's filing date October 6th, decision date December 8th, 2015.
It looks like it says the same, same wording. It's just that it might be in a different...
Eric?
Tom, if you want to...
So I guess to answer your question...
This is different than what you had.
As of right now, there is no additional lighting.
I'll get it to you.
There should be.
Should be filed in the registry, too.
Like I said, we're, we're here to get the final input and everything we're doing. This is, this is, is going to be probably the last time that Eric's in here to request an expansion of the, of the building down there. And we want to get it done right. We want to get it done once.
I agree with you. We need to go through them all and make sure that, that we're hitting them all. And I like that you're saying we'll work together to make that happen.
Building inspector, we met with the fire department, we met DPW. We're going to do whatever we need to do. We met with our neighbors down there. But we're trying to get good input from everybody. We're trying to be, you know, open and honest about what we're doing.
Can I talk about the timeline just a little bit, that which is what that reminded me of? It's two years, right?
The two-year, yep, the permit is valid for two years.
And that was the December 9th, December 15th?
That was December 8th, 2015.
Okay, which puts two years as December 8th.
December 8th, 2017.
Right.
To the end of this calendar year.
And that's when the work has to be done?
Well, so this is what the board needs to discuss with the applicant. So, and probably could be up for interpretation by lawyers if they wanted to do this. So if the board, in my opinion, if the board takes these conditions and puts them into the new permit, that would start the clock on the conditions. Again, it would give them extension. Typically, if an applicant is asking for an extension for a special permit, which they have the right to do, it has to be filed in writing to the planning board. The planning board holds a hearing, a discussion, and then they could extend the conditions. So I think what the board can do here is they can either, they can either work with the applicant and hopefully there would be something in writing that we could have in the file in determining if there's an extension needed on any of these conditions from 2015. Maybe they don't need it. Maybe they intend to have everything in place by the end of the calendar year. I don't know.
Why don't we ask that?
So...
I mean, given that, I know you can't control when permits come out, but if we made the assumption for the sake of argument, we've got all the permits and city aspect done, at what point do you think you'd start the building and when would you complete?
I think, I think we would, as soon as we get our permits, we put it under everything and everything's ready to go, we'd start immediately.
So you plan to construct this year?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I just, I mean, I guess that, that you need to determine and speak with your attorney is the risk-taking in sort of leaving them with the 2015 permit and understanding that that permit will become, not invalid, but the, the conditions need to be completed by the end of those two years. Okay.
I mean, I personally believe that we could, we could tie all these into a certificate of occupancy for the building. I mean, they can be put on the plan as, as things that have to be done. And I mean, there's nothing here that we have not discussed doing or planned on doing in this.
Well, our building inspector will look at this decision and he won't grant you a CO until he knows all the conditions are done. Yeah.
And I would not expect that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, like I said, I don't believe there's anything here that's, that's, isn't achievable as long as we can get it going in a timely fashion.
And, and the other aspect of it is, now that I'm thinking about it, is I believe that the language in the state law says that, and it may even be the zoning, hold on, but it's that action needs to happen within two years. So it doesn't necessarily have to be completed, but there needs to be some action. Hold on, let me just go to that section. Okay, so special permit shall expire if a substantial use thereof has not commenced.
Okay.
The term being commenced, so there needs to be some commencement, which at the minimum means that a building permit needs to be pulled.
Right.
That's, that's kind of like the minimum. Within two years. So that commencement is, that's, that's where the...
Gray area comes.
But something needs to happen before the end of the two years or the permit is no longer valid.
But importantly, I have the sense that you guys are ready, once you get all this ironed out, to pull the trigger on this.
It's not, like, how hard is it to extend a permit?
It's not, it's very easy. All it is, is a letter to the board requesting a permit extension. You guys determining whether you think it's worth it or not and then, and then granting it. It happens.
Yeah, I figured.
I mean, the only thing I, I see as any kind of thing that may become a hindrance in this based on when we need to go in would be paving in the parking lot just because if we brought out a CECL paving, that would be by the only thing.
Right, you could repay the next season.
The rest of the stuff as far as lighting and all that is, is going in within the infrastructure and putting the building up.
Yeah, understood. How many, what is the updated, with this new, when this is all done, what is the new capacity in your building compared to the existing capacity?
According to the architects, it's 140.
Compared to what is it now?
And that's based on standing room, right? Not sitting? Under the occupancy codes?
Correct, yes.
Standing.
And that is, that include, do you have like, what staff do you have on a typical shift or opening? Is it just the two of you behind the bar or is it like, are there wait staff servers or?
Typical shift, we've got, like, on a Saturday for example, we've got three people working behind the bar, certified. And actually, when we spoke to the fire marshal today, once we exceed 100 people, we have to do, everyone has to be part of a crowd management class.
Yeah.
But typically, we've got...
Three people behind the bar and then what, a couple more people just managing and running around and getting...
Let's call it one server and then people running around.
Okay.
And your hours, you're still three days a week?
Well, they're four days.
Four days a week and those days are?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And the hours are from...
Our hours currently are four to seven on Thursdays and Fridays. And Saturdays are two to eight and Sundays are two to six.
So it's a very limited, narrow range that you're actually open.
And we've gotten those hours, people come, we have not really had any issues with over in buildings.
What's, remind me the math with the, with the spots. I know I read it somewhere, but I can't find it at the spot. The parking spots? Yeah.
So the math?
The math associated with it is the number of...
Okay, so let's go to the parking section. Hold on.
It seems like it's not a restaurant at this point.
There's still a map.
So the, so the manufacturing itself, and I don't know which one we did, but it was, it's one for each 600 square feet of gross floor area or 0.75 for each employee of the combined employment of the two largest successive shifts, whichever is larger.
So one per 600?
Probably the easier, it's probably the, ends up...
So we got one here. It sounds like we got one. Because it's, it's only 1,900, no, sorry. 1,900 square.
I sound like a blues singer. 16, 16.6.
Yeah.
For the manufacturing, for the 10,000 square feet.
Gotcha, and then we're going to add an extra 2,000 square feet.
And then the tasting room, so this is, where does my...
Gotcha. So as long as it's not a restaurant, the pay, the parking, the parking, number of parking spots is acceptable?
Yep.
So, yeah, so it would be 16, 30 square feet for the tasting room. I don't think the patio actually qualifies under the, I think it's just the structure itself, the way that the parking rigs. Divided by 300, so that's another five. So 16.6 plus five is... 30, right? 30 is 31.
So that's fine.
So, so the, so the number of 31 spaces need to be paved. Because the tasting room has increased. The tasting room from the 2015 was only 600 square feet. The tasting room is now almost tripling in size. So that accounts for the increase of paved parking needed to 31 spaces.
So if we iron out that it is not a restaurant and it won't become a restaurant, then 31 is the number of paved spots that have to be done?
Well, for now, if it becomes a restaurant, they have to come back to us and ask for a change of use to be a restaurant, to serve food. Any, any other food besides alcoholic, besides beer?
Yes.
And then, then there will be changes to...
So there would have to be one space for every four seats plus two for staff or something like that, yeah.
So then that changes paving, which is everything. Okay, understood. So if the math works out, after you guys do the math for this new square footage, I mean, you know, we're not the math people. You're going to come back to us and tell us the math. You're going to tell us the new paving limits? And how, and I don't know if you're going to work with the city engineer or you're going to, you're going to hire someone or whatever you choose to negotiate, but then that comes into, what, how does that change your drainage with the new impermeable area? Okay?
Yes, I've already started that conversation with the city engineer.
Great.
If we need to...
Yeah, and then we have to figure out...
Private source involvement.
Yep, yep, because then we have to figure out, does the existing stormwater system, can it collect and treat that new impermeable runoff?
Did the original, mark the original site stuff up there? At that point, I believe if my memory corrects, is correct, that there was some calculations running for...
Right.
Because there was, weren't sure exactly what was happening at that point, so.
Yep.
It's mostly sheet flow that's happening out there. There's nothing, there's no water that's being diverted away in any particular area by any of the grading changes out there. It's just, it's pure sheet flow.
Understood, but if the, if the square footage of impervious area increases, you have to do a new stormwater?
Okay.
Still, it'll probably show the same thing that you're fine, but you're just going to make sure of it.
I have some comments from the city engineer. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to see it. I think from your conversation...
I have, and I spoke with him earlier, but I didn't see any of the email.
I'd like to just read a few of them out to see, to see, you know, how you respond to them. Number one, and this is for Daniel J. Murphy, the city engineer. Applicant should confirm that all stormwater infrastructure is in place as shown on Sheet 2 of 5 from the 2012 Rating and Drainage Plan. Says that he did observe a structure and infiltration based on the south side of the entrance road, but didn't see the other one shown on the plan on the north side, though it could be due to snow cover at the time. So can you confirm that it's as of Sheet 2 of 5? You might not be able to do that right now, but when you...
Eric has a copy of the email. It was forwarded to him this afternoon.
You have that?
It came in late, so you might not have seen it.
There, there's seven items here. If you have them, I think then rather than throw them at you now, it's clear we're going to have to come back to resolve some...
Yeah, and I actually asked several of them, so there, it's not going to be a surprise when you read it. That was actually, that's one of the things I was asking, so. I think you're covered on a lot of it. I mean, there are some questions about, there really is no directions on, on, on traffic flow. So we talked about that, traffic flow direction. You know, clarify that, that fire lane is going to be used strictly for fire lane and not traffic and...
Bar scale.
Yeah, at a scale. I didn't see that, I see a scale, well, yeah, bar scale. Instead of saying just scale it because one goes 30 at a bar scale and because if people photocopy to different scales, they're not going to have 1 inch equals 30. Doesn't really matter. Because it's, like, this 1 inch equals 30 is different than your 1 inch equals 30, so put a bar scale on it. Things like that. Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's, it's, it should, it should be pretty simple for you to answer these. It seemed to me that you've answered many of them and a lot of other ones you said you'll look into, so.
I think it'll be good for the next meeting to make sure you have specific responses to each one. It just helps us clear it up.
Don't forget the public.
Okay, and now I think, unless you guys have any more questions, I'd like to open it up to the public and hear what both have to say. Anyone want to go first? Anyone from the public want to talk? Name an address. Podium, please. Name and address. And hello again.
I'm Bert Thurber, 11 Fort Hill Road.
Okay.
From the beginning, neighbors have had two primary concerns. One, increased noise. Two, increased traffic. The reason we supported Eric's original proposal was because we thought we were dealing with a brewery. Other than production noise, there would be no noise. Traffic, very low traffic. Therefore, we thought it was a good use of the land. Indeed, we have always said that ideally, we want his brewery to succeed so far that he in fact buys the rest of the land and puts it in hops, such that it's indeed a brewing operation, which we believe is consonant with the general nature of that area. The state changed the laws and Eric chose immediately, actually before immediately, to take advantage of it by proposing, first of all, a tasting room. He actually had several other ideas that never went beyond talk. The tasting room, obviously, once he got his entertainment license, increases the potential for noise. And the more people that come to the tasting room, increases the traffic. Once Eric moves beyond brewing and pouring and entertaining, he and his enterprise and we, the neighbors, are on divergent paths. Because the more he increases the entertainment, the more he increases the number of customers, the more the noise and the more the traffic. And what we see here is the next step in the process of expansion. And what we further here, already been anticipating, is that it could move beyond this to a restaurant. So the expansion that we hope for, the expansion of a brewery consonant with the environment, is increasingly turning into something else. And therefore, we're concerned. I have a question or two. I was, I was trying to follow. You were asking good questions, but I wasn't hearing all of the answers. Do I understand correctly that the new tasting room is an additional space in addition to the old tasting room?
You guys should field that one. Can you restate the question?
Is the new, is the new tasting room, is it in addition to the old tasting room?
The old tasting room is staying exactly the way it is today.
Do I understand?
Is the new, the new enclosed tasting room is what we're proposing with the planning.
Okay. Did I hear correctly that the floor area of the old tasting room is 600 square feet?
Yes, that's what it was in the last permit.
Okay, and, and now we're asking for an addition of 1,628 square feet, which is in fact an increase of 271%.
Right, so, just to clarify that, so you're now going to have two taste rooms, the existing one and then this new one, is that correct?
Yes, the existing one is staying just the way it is.
Yep.
They're not being opened to each other and, other than the doorway?
Other than the doorway. And the idea behind that is to utilize the smaller tasting room on, on the majority of the time. In winter months, when the brewery is much smaller than when there's the outside patio open and the large area, even the extra bar area, would only be opened on occasions when there was, you know, maybe a Saturday when there would be more people coming in and out to try to, or trying to do is get that whole area so that it's not being saturated into that one spot where people are being forced to stay outside and try to keep everybody contained within the side of the building. And that was one of the things that we, why we designed the building as it was, to minimize some of the noise and to deal with the noise issues that we've been talking to the neighbors about.
And I suspect that this will, in fact, alleviate the problem of noise. I mean, except each time you build outward, you're getting closer to the neighbors. But the problem of the, of the number of people who can come, I'm actually confused. And maybe someone can help me clarify my confusion. If I understood you correctly, someone correctly, in the original, the maximum occupancy of the original 600 square, square foot space was 87. Now we're going to increase it by 271%. And yet, the new maximum area only goes to 140. On what basis? Is it not, you know, a certain number of people per square foot?
It is, it's, so it's, I asked the building inspector this morning to clarify for me the occupancy loads and how that's calculated. And if it's standing room, then it's five square feet per person. And if it's concentrated tables and chairs, then it's 15 square feet per person. That's what he told me this morning.
And what I'm worried about, needless to say, is that if you increase the actual area that's being served, used as a serving room by two hundred and seventy-one percent, I sure hope those figures on the, on the occupancy are correct, because I would assume that it goes from eighty-seven to far more than one forty. One forty doesn't sound like a correct figure to me at this point, but I haven't, I didn't know what you, that you just told me, and I haven't had the opportunity to calculate that. But it seems to me that we have the potential for a great increase in the number of people, and since they usually come by car, and a great increase in the amount of traffic. It's my impression, now I don't frequent the, the brewery much, but it's my impression that upon occasion, they've been over their occupancy of eighty-seven. As I said to Eric, and we had, I appreciated the opportunity to discuss this previously, it looked to me like the city was just sort of looking the other way when these occupancies were exceeded. The city, like Eric, is eager for this brewery to succeed. And the city, like Eric, but unlike the neighbors, doesn't seem to care at what level of operation it succeeds, whether it's a brewery growing hops and producing beer, or whether it is in fact, a tasting room, an enlarged tasting room, a restaurant. Therefore, we're concerned about the potential in the increase of this space for what it does to occupancy levels, whether those occupancy levels are actually enforced, and what that does to traffic. How many cars actually arrive? How many, if the spaces are not marked, and there's more cars than spaces allotted on the design, my guess is they'll find a place. And then we will once again have more and more people. Now, you all know Fort Hill Road. It is, was, still is, a country lane. A, like most roads in the city of East Hampton, a rapidly deteriorating country lane, not able to bear the traffic it already gets, and not likely to easily bear more traffic. So, our concern, and we, we voiced these same concerns earlier, our concern is that this enlargement is not, is, is, first of all, likely to increase the number of people by a large number, to increase the traffic on what was once a country lane, and that it appears to be simply one more step in the expansion of Fort Hill Brewery, not in the direction of brewing, but in the direction of entertaining. I guess that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Can I just be?
All right, hold just a moment, go ahead.
Is it, how does, can I ask questions that follow up to him, or should we?
No, absolutely, you can, go ahead.
So is, so the fifteen square foot, so, to follow up on that, then we have twenty...
So I'm doing, I'm looking at the parking, I think I miscalculated the first time.
Okay, so let, well, let me just...
It could be the cold medicine that's kicking in.
Totally fine, so six hundred square feet was the original, we're adding sixteen thirty, so that's...
Sixteen, sixteen thirty plus, um, six hundred is twenty-two thirty divided by three hundred, so that's seven point four spaces for that alone, which is seven.
Yep.
Round down.
You round down, okay.
Yep, um, and then ten thousand, it was six hundred square feet, right? One space for each, for six hundred, is that right? Let's just confirm, but I think that's right. Yep, so ten thousand divided by six hundred is sixteen, so six, sixteen point six, so that's seventeen. So seventeen plus seven is twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so it's still...
So it's still okay with the...
Okay, but, so twenty-two hundred and thirty square foot of tasting room space, and then for a hundred and forty occupancy, that, that's about, that's more than fifteen square feet per person, so are we, are we proposing, are you proposing tables and chairs? Is that what I heard, fifteen square foot person if it's tables and chairs?
That's according to the building codes, and that's the building inspector, and I believe you had that conversation with him this morning.
Because, uh, we brought it up as far as not having any fixed seating anywhere in the building where you can put tables.
Currently, there is not, yeah.
You know, it's, so, the only area that's fixed in there is actually the bar area, service area, um, the rest of the stuff are just movable.
So the new space will have tables?
Will have fixed tables and chairs.
Well, it'll have, yes, it'll be high props, it can be moved away if there, if the, if the area doesn't need to be moved away.
Yeah, clean the floor, whatever, it's not gonna be...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Did you say that if you moved away the tables and chairs, then you could have a much larger occupancy?
No, I just answered your question, um, what...
I believe that's actually true, though, in my conversations this morning, is that it depends on the use of the space, is how the occupancy loads are set. So it's the square footage and what's happening there. So, so if there's, hold on, if there's a, for instance, if there's, um, a, a restaurant that has tables and chairs during lunch hour, but that at night they have a band, and they clear out the, the tables and chairs for a dance floor, the occupancy loads change, and you can have two separate occupancy loads in a space depending on the use. So the example he gave me was this facility in Westfield that has two occupancy loads for its space, one for dining during the lunch hour, and one at night when they have bands and they clear out the tables and have a dance floor.
So that would pertain to them if they have an overabundance of
Well, we're saying if they clear out the tables and chairs.
Of people, they can take out the tables to allow for the...
For the occupancy loads could change, my understanding from this morning, though, and this was at eight o'clock this, this morning when I caught him, as they were heading out to, to your facility, is, you know, that some of this hadn't been ironed out yet, and you still have floor plans that you're configuring for the space.
Correct.
And so the load numbers haven't been set in stone at this point.
They, they should be very close to where it's at.
But as part of our charge, we actually dictate the occupancy. They tell us what, well, they tell, no, we don't, they tell us what it is, and we, we roll that into our conditions.
So you are, you are working on the use aspect of it, and your job is to, your job is more on the site plan?
Yep.
And the impacts of the use in the neighborhood and the exterior. You don't have any jurisdiction under state law on how the interior building is designed. That's outside your jurisdiction, your jurisdiction is only the site plan, exterior, and the use, and what that use is generating for, um, potential impacts.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
All right.
I think it's probably viable, or a good thing to mention too, that we also don't do enforcement, I know that got mentioned at one point, it was a concern about will it be enforced, and that's not, we have to think of it beforehand, so. All right, any other questions? Well, there was another member of the public, oh, okay, yeah, sorry, go ahead. Okay, do you wanna come up now? Sorry, take two.
Thank you for that clarification.
My name is Sue Dadman, I live at Eight Camel Drive, I actually work at Fort Hill Brewery. I would just like to clarify a statement that was just made about keeping track of the occupancy. We are very much aware of how many people are in that building at any given time. Although I will say, I cannot speak for Thursdays, I do not work on Thursdays. I am there and have been there every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, except for a handful of times since the place opened. We have never gone over occupancy, we count, and we make sure to count. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna talk?
My name is John Conil, seventeen Fort Hill Road, you guys all probably know me well, Eric knows me well. First, I'd like to start by saying, um, we appreciate that Eric and David, right, uh, had us in to look at the plans and, and get our input, that was, uh, very refreshing, because, you know, we've been butting heads for years, so, um, we appreciate that. My thing, um, you know, Bert's focusing on the traffic, I'd like to take a minute to focus on the sound, cuz I'm pretty much the one that's mostly impacted by the hooting and hollering and the bands, and whatever's happening over there. The new plan sounds like it's gonna address the, the sound in a positive way. The only thing I would like to point out is that it seems that the porch has windows, and if they're open, that sound is gonna come right out, like the walls aren't even there, so, I don't know if the, the board wants to investigate into, you know, what kind of soundproofing, or, um, you know, if there's anything they can do to...
Do you mind if we ask them now?
Sure, I mean...
Feel free to remain. Can you tell us about what sound mitigation is in the, in the wall design?
Well, the sound mitigation is, it's a two-by-six construction building, which will have, um, probably, I don't know if we're gonna go with the high-density closed cell insulation in there, which is an option, which is probably the most proactive way as far as the wall area is to stop shedding sound. The, um, the glass, we're actually working, we're working with R and R Window at the conversation. They have the abilities, because of the commercial field that they work in, yeah, to get higher standards in, you know, thermal protection as well as, as some sound mitigation in the commercial aspect, so, that's one of the things we're working with on, on the window side. I mean, we definitely would like to have the ability to open up the windows and give fresh air into the building, um, and, you know, maybe the areas where, uh, when the band's playing, you know, try to keep it closed.
Well, that's, that's my concern, is that when the band's in there, it's, it's just gonna, the, the sound's gonna rip out of there, like...
This is gonna be more, and I, and I, and I can't obviously speak for any, you know, neighbors and stuff. When the band is in playing inside the building and it's closed up this time of year, I'm sure you probably don't...
Right, we, yeah, it's, it's been a quiet winter.
I mean, I think, I think this, the new building and, and the way it's being constructed, not only with the building itself, but also part of the landscape plan that we're still developing as far as putting some more natural screening, even on that side of the building. And we're trying to really address the patio area to really, to minimize not only a band playing out there, but just people talking and things like that through vegetation. We've brought the patio area all the way around, I don't, I think we, we were talking about a little bit at the meeting, we're bringing it actually all the way around to where the patio and silo is. So in the event there is any kind of outdoor music, that would be the ideal place for it, because not only the building, the existing building is offering it, but the new building is gonna take care of that as well as vegetated offering. The windows, I mean, it, it's, it's just about impossible to make something completely soundproof.
Right, but it'd be more soundproof, it'd be more soundproof with the windows closed and the air conditioning on during the summer months, than if the, than if the windows were open.
And, and depending on whether, and we've, we've talked about it, and the idea of maybe bringing, you know, even the, any kind of music entertainment down towards the further end, instead of having it up at the other end, would probably be more realistic too, because it would serve also if people were outside, there would be somebody playing, and they're looking out, so getting hollered back, so. I think that's something that, you know, we've been talking about here towards...
Is there a proposed stage or anything showing? I don't see, like, a stage area.
No, we, we have not put into any kind of...
I mean, it might just be a good idea to have it so that the sound, the speakers are pointing away from the homes.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I, most, most occasions, I mean, I shouldn't say most occasions, a good part of the occasions, it's, it's more of an acoustical performance, there are some amplified music that goes on in here, but the majority of the stuff, you know, tends to be more low-toed, acoustical. And I guess those are, those are things, once again, here we're trying, you know, we wanna, we wanna make sure that, at the end of the day, that not only is the building built, and it's, it's, it's an effective tool for the brewery, but also the neighbors are happy, um, you know, as, as much as they can. You know, there's been some comments made about wanting the brewery to succeed, and so that the hope would be to buy the rest of the land and, and grow hops out there. I currently am growing two acres of hops, and it's a very expensive venture to do it. We've worked very hard at it, and for that ever to happen, and ever, the brewery ever to come to a spot where that could happen, brewery needs to succeed, because not only, and the cost of buying that land, which is very expensive, it's prime, it's prime industrial land down there. The cost of putting in hops and, and the whole process with them is very expensive, so.
Sure.
Is that...
That's part of it.
Well, I, I, I do appreciate that you're at least thinking about sound mitigation and, uh, just continuing up on that path. Because my basic goal is I wanna be able to sit on my deck and not hear that music so loud that it's taking away from quality of life of mine. Because we paid a lot of money for that house, that, you know, where we live, so...
And we, and we understand that, and we know, I think that's...
So it's, I'm, it's, I'm glad that, you know, like I said, I appreciate you guys calling us in to get our opinion and...
And, and I'm sure we'll, we'll have more as we get into the closer area to get some final stuff and get some input from there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to note too, that, uh, that is an improvement of the last meeting we had, I think that, you know, there was a big discussion of the neighbors that are here, I think you mentioned then about how things had been thrown at you, and you didn't have a chance, that there was no input, it just happened. And I'm happy to hear that there's some input now, and it seems like everyone's agreeing there. Anyone else that wants to talk? Please come on up.
Joyce Petraskevich, fifteen Fort Hill Road. Um, if, if you do allow it for the music, I wish you'd put a stipulation in that the music has to stay inside and not outside.
Have you had outside music?
Yeah.
The situation that, that we're trying to create here with the patio area would put music in a spot that would be, like I say, I think it is gonna be very hard for you to ever hear any of it. Unless it was something that was very amplified, and, and, and even at that, you know, like I say, between, between the existing building where it is, we're talking, you know, where the big silos are around the corner.
Right, but I know at our meeting that we got together, you said the band would not be outside.
So is that true, in the new design, the band won't outside?
Going back on the porch at that point.
Well, yeah, but you said it would either be at that end, or more at the end where the patio, the outside silos were gonna be.
So the, there are two spots for the band, it would be either in the, either in the closed area, or on, in the porch, uh, by the side of the silos. So the idea is that the stage essentially can be between the two silos, would make for an interesting scene, and, uh...
Nothing on the front porch.
No, I understood that it would be inside, but, uh, near the door by the silos. That's the way I understood at their meeting. Because I've got big abrobities in my yard, I sit on my patio, and I hear the music in the summer, and I don't think that's the...
This is gonna be a completely different scenario, as far as where the music is gonna be coming from on the outside, it's not gonna be on the front porch, open to anything. I mean, we couldn't even possibly even try to contain noise here, we, we know that, it doesn't work. So the, the whole idea is, if, as far as an outside thing on a nice day, would be out in the back, and, and part of the landscape plan, which is odd that we haven't the copies of, because it's still, we're just trying to define how it's gonna be, uh, developed as, does a, uh, uh, will, will address not only because of the building buffering as, as a blocking purpose, but also some full, some landscape foliage out there.
Would you be receptive to us if we call and say, hey, the music is loud, and turn it down in the summer?
I, I, I guess so.
If it's within reason, of course, I think it'll be...
I mean, it's, it's, just trying to get to a place where we're all as comfortable to be.
Right, because even in my house, I hate using, listening to the music with the air going and all my windows shut. You know, that, I don't think that's right, that I have to hear that way out the other side of my house.
Thank you, thank you. All right, anyone else? Any other comments?
I have one. The last time we were here, we did specifically speak about sound mitigation for, have, when you had entertainment out on the front porch.
Yep.
What sound mitigation are you gonna have in place around this patio?
It's enclosed.
I said, Sherry.
Explain that several different times, not only are we gonna have the existing building that's there, insofar as location of, 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 of music, some, some, some music going on, but also the new structure itself is going to be a direct blocking light of sight, I guess if you wanna call it, light of sight and light of sound heading toward the neighbors. And then the landscape plan also shows additional vegetation around the patio area, as well as, uh, showing some landscaping vegetation up along the side of this new addition.
I don't know if you guys got it, I've landed that, so I wanna share it.
There you go, check that out, that gives you an idea of landscaping that's gonna propose to be, to mitigate the, the noise.
I think we're, we're making a very conscious effort here to try to control as much sound as we can. There's, there's a lot of noise that you hear every day, and there's a lot of noise you hear right from that area. I live on East Street, and I hear ski shows on Saturdays and Sundays on the Oxfords, when the big V8s fire up. I can hear the band down at, on Lower Mill Pond, playing on Sunday afternoons. You know, there's, there's noises out there that are unnatural, and, and we hear them, and I think what we're trying to do there is just try to put everything, effort forward
Which we appreciate.
To minimize how much, not only, not only the, the noise, but also the sight, because, so this way, you know, people are out, the neighbors are out, they don't actually see people out in the time. It's the vice versa, and we're trying to direct people towards certain areas of view and everything, because obviously the mountains aren't played, so we're bringing them on the other side of the building, trying to create a space over there where they can have...
Does that answer your question?
The current use is, it, so it's, I, I'm reading here accessory use... Yeah. The current use is, so it's, I'm reading here, accessory use is industrial, includes retail of products and merchandise and for the pouring and consumption of alcoholic beverages manufactured on-site. Is that the only, it sounds to me like this is also considered entertainment that they're.
There's a, they have an entertainment license through the licensing board. So that's a separate permit.
It's a really interesting dynamic because it's industrial, which gives it a wide range of use, but it's like a budding, directly a budding residential area. So it's.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Ed, what's the change of use having entertainment? But it's not.
We could certainly clarify that in the next decision regarding the description of the.
Yeah.
We can add.
Because it sounds like there it is and also entertainment. So we want to make sure.
There's no separate use for entertainment. Yeah.
Okay, good to know.
So if there's no more questions from the public, anyone on the board, it seems to me that we need to continue this, but I'd like to give some marching orders and only then for the board with that. It seems to me, at least from my perspective, that I'm considering this, that what we're doing here is a no-restaurant special permit. In terms of the calculations that we'll be looking for, that we're talking, a restaurant not included, and as was, I believe you mentioned, if a restaurant doesn't want to come later, that would just be, come before us. Again, it's a, it's a special permit. We're not saying it can't happen, it's just not a part of what we're considering right now. And, and so I think that we want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that when new information comes forward. I think we threw out some numbers. We want you to kind of hone them. What was it, thirty-one?
No, I miscounted. That was the cold when I was in talking. It's actually twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah, okay.
But please confirm that.
Twenty-five that they have.
Paved spots. That's the required paved spots. You're okay.
Because twenty-five is okay.
I would request that they confirm that. Please do your own calcs and just let us know.
Yeah, confirm your own calcs. But in the past, the board has included the handicap spaces and, and as part of that off-street parking calculation.
As we go forward.
Yeah, no, it's a good one. It's a good one.
Just help you see where we're at so that we can come a few steps closer to, to getting toward an end goal here. One of the thing, you know, I think the sound thing, it's been a big issue in the, the first time this came through. It sounds to me overall like this is a big improvement. Personally, I'm good with that. It seems like you're handling it well. Traffic flow, brought up again today, a big issue of safety and concern for us always, that traffic, the paving, that's been a big thing. We don't have a, a traffic study on this. Is that something you've considered?
In my experience with listening to other projects, I heard that the traffic studies can get outrageously expensive. So I would prefer to not do a traffic study.
You know, it comes to us whether or not we think it's appropriate to do a traffic study. So I, I kind of want to get a sense of the board. Couple of things I'll say. I think it's paved up until a little bit further down from where you are. At that point, it turns into dirt road. Am I wrong about that? Is it much further down?
It's paved all the way through, but it turns into dirt road as it goes out onto.
Bird Sanctuary?
Arcadia.
Yeah, it goes into Arcadia.
Yeah, it's way down. I'm not down there that often. Also, there's a couple of other big, you're not the only traffic generator that. Arcadia's one, right? There's another one. What's that?
The Rod and Dunn Club.
Okay. So there are other things happening there.
Those operate at different times in the day too. Like Arcadia has a program for school kids. I don't know if they do daycare now.
It's a preschool.
Preschool.
Okay, I'm going to let him. Go ahead. Can you restate that, please?
I'm not sure if a traffic study on that particular area is really necessary for the, because I traveled that going to Arcadia. And there's just not a lot of traffic unless there's something going on. Most of the traffic really is going to the brewery from what I can see when I go out there. So.
So you're saying no traffic study?
I don't think there, there, it's necessary unless the other board members feel it should be.
I don't think so.
Okay.
And you go down, I've been down a million times and all, you know, I go down all the time and I don't, the only time I see traffic is when they close at night and you might have, you know, seven, eight cars that are leaving all at the same time. But mostly it just comes and goes sporadically. It's, it, there isn't any concern, I don't think.
Okay. How do you feel?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it's necessary for a business this small. I mean, I don't see that there's really that many people going to be there at the same time.
Well, it's unanimous because I feel the same way. For me, one of the big deciding factors is the fact that you're only operating four days and in limited hours in that time. I do see the potential for during those times, the traffic could be high, higher than the road would normally see, based on the numbers that we're talking about. And even if it was more than a hundred and forty, even if it were double, in my opinion, that's still not enough to really push it over the top as I'm seeing. What's more, I, I feel that that makes it a safe, so I don't think that a traffic study is necessary. I don't personally feel like we can request it. So there you go. Any other criteria, the issues that the city engineer raised, definitely be prepared to answer those.
I'd like to see a landscape plan, a final landscape plan submitted that can go in the, in the record. And I may even snag your draft for now, if that's okay, unless you want it back.
Oh, no, you can take that.
Okay. But I think that's important to have so that you can really, can look at the species to make sure that there are going to be evergreens planted in that patio area for sound mitigation. I think it's important to have that on the record. And then, Chris, you had mentioned resolution on the stormwater calcs, so.
Yes, the impervious versus permeable areas, resolution of the stormwater calcs. I wanted to just make sure that that's, that your post, post-construction conditions will actually be able to be met through the stormwater systems there.
And you also requested a line between the paved and unpaved parking on the site plan.
I do want to see that, yeah.
So on the site plan, delineate where the paved versus unpaved will be.
We, we haven't been able to do that because we wanted to get clarification on these numbers. And some of this, obviously with the dating even was a little bit different.
And I'd like to see the traffic flow through, you know, even if it's just like where you proposed to have maybe arrows on the pavement to show traffic or signage, just so that people know where they need, how they need to travel around the site.
Yeah, I think you have one.
Yeah, I got just a quick question. It says, you've got a renovated kitchenery. What is that going to be making your kitchen now?
That is just an employee kitchen. But after speaking to Jackie Duda, she highly recommended, because it's going to be sort of a gray area, because it's going to be a sha, a shared spot between commercial and let's just say, industrial. She thinks that it's in everyone's best sanitary advantage to just make that, to input. Right now, it's very much a residential kitchen.
Make it commercial.
So she wants it commercial so that there's a trench drain in the floor, stainless steel so that there's no, so there's no ambiguity.
And her suggestion was at this point, because of the, all the upgrades that we're doing, and it, and it makes sense is go ahead and make sure that any fire suppression in that kitchen area is adequate under the commercial standards, enhancing system for cooking and things and stuff like that. And it, I mean, with the amount of money that you've got to put in to do something like that, it all makes sense.
So that might be just in case you use it as a restaurant.
They'd have to come back to us. We don't have to worry about that.
We're joining the planning board today, not to be a restaurant.
Yeah, we covered that.
And the idea is, is because this, this space now is confined with inside building, it's going to be opened up into the new area where the serving bar is going to be. So the flaw of keeping.
I definitely think that.
And you're running the tap line straight from.
From the cooler.
From the coolers. So they're changing the, from understanding, you're changing the lines or the way that the lines are running into the tasting room. And that's partially why your, those kitchen upgrades are needed.
The existing ones are serviced by kegs that are brought out. These are going to be, the new ones are going to be.
Running straight from the cooler.
So you're not going to have to haul kegs.
Right. But we're going to have a dishwasher back there where we're storing clean glasses, storing dirty glasses.
I see why you want it. It's, okay.
So what you're telling me, the kitchen is just used to cook food for the people that work there? Is that, is that the idea?
Right.
And clean all their dishes.
Now it's sort of going to be a shared, a shared space use, yeah.
That's fair. I definitely want to see on the plan, I'm not sure which one you put out, but the specific locations of the lights and the types of lights. Harry mentioned that. I think that's really important.
I agree.
That we're going to want to see. And, and definitely include that one point that was in the original criteria and all the original criteria according to the document that we gave you. The one especially that has a, a post right up as you come in off the driveway. Because I've been there and it is dark in that outer area. That's going to make a big positive difference. Any other criteria or things that we're, I mean, we're not making the final thing here.
No, you're basically telling them what you're expecting of them.
At the next meeting.
Or whatever meeting they want to come back. That's the other question that the board needs to know is how long do they need to pull these documents together? Would they be ready in two weeks or do they need two meeting times?
I'm speaking in the third person, but I'll let you just. When, when, how, how long do you need?
I guess, I guess my only question is because I haven't had a chance to look at the emails from the VPW yet. Do you exactly know what he's, what he's going to do? I guess that would be my.
Yeah, I've done too much talking. We're going to read them after all.
Do you want to look at a copy? Just need to get back to the cloud.
So the VPW questions are, are comments and questions. The applicant should confirm that all stormwater infrastructure is in place as shown in the grading plan that we just talked about in two thousand twelve grading plan. Confirm that sediment removal and maintenance removal has been done and how often. So we talked about that. You said you do that every spring. For what, whatever is proposed suggests that the applicant provide calculations demonstrating that existing and any proposed basins. I need, I do need that because I kind of cut off.
It's very small. I don't know how you're reading.
It's really tiny. Basins are properly sized to contain the stormwater flows for existing and proposed paved and gravel areas. We talked about that. Applicant, are you proposing curb or landscape parking islands? We talked about that as well. And you aren't proposing anything back there. Is, and that reminds me, do we have to, well, we can maybe at the next meeting talk about how we define that, that parking or do we need to?
Or they can come back and explain now that they understand that they can do gravel back there, how they intend to. So I think you should allow the applicants to, to propose how that's going to.
Yeah, how is it delineated? Just from a safety point of view, from just, do you know people walking back there and, you know, is there a pedestrian, a defined pedestrian area to get back to their cars or walking? How do they get back there without getting hit? Have the applicant add a bar scale to the plan? We talked about that. Will the fire lane be restricted to traffic? So we'll want you to answer that by the, that's why we talked about the traffic arrows and flow. And what are the proposed paving and gravel limits? We talked about that as well. So those are the, the items that the city engineer had.
Okay. The main points from twelve point seven-nine, I think we'll cover one more further along in the process. Anything else, guys? What's, when do we, how long do you need?
I think we're probably doing it in two weeks, but in the event that we can, I'm sure that we would know within a week if we're not able to do it in two weeks. So could, if we are not able to pull it off in two weeks, I would mail Jessica by Tuesday of next week.
So the, so the slight problem is under the state law, they, we have to announce now when the hearing is continued for the benefit of the public and the world so that they know when to come back. So.
We'll gamble two weeks.
You want to gamble?
Sure, no.
Because spring and summer only last for so long.
So April fourth.
We have a, I know just in terms of.
April fourth is the next meeting.
Yeah, we have a couple of other things coming up too. I know that there was a continuation of the cannabis discussion.
That's on the eighteenth that we've, we're scheduling.
Was there one other thing that's on the?
There's a, there's a hearing, I think.
There is a hearing, but it's.
I can't remember. Oh, it's Pioneer Landscapes on Industrial Parkway.
All right.
It's okay.
Yeah, I think we can.
It's fine.
We've got this ongoing sign saga too.
Yeah.
We're ready.
So, so April.
Continue to April four.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to continue the special permit for thirty-four Hill Road till April fourth.
I move to continue this hearing till April fourth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And against, any extensions? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. That was our last item of business. You don't have anything administrative that you want to toss in there, do you?
Um, yes, I do need that back. Thank you. Um, I don't, yeah, who's second?
Chat?
Who's second? Chat, you second?
Chat, sorry.
We're a little behind.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Who is Jackie Duda?
Huh?
Who is Jackie Duda? Specter. Thank you.
She's the health director.
I knew her, I heard the name three times, but I didn't know she was. Thank you.
The administrator.